Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second? Motion made by Bo, seconded by Diggs, all in favor. Six oh. Now we just think a motion on consent agenda.
I make motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Motion made by Steppen.
Second?
Second by Ashley, all in favor. Let's carry six oh. Moving around along.
Now we said quick recognition at Mrs. Fisher's graphic art class submitted several, did a little differently with our Christmas cart. And all of those submissions are up there in the wall, we'll take a look at those later on. And ladies up here and I chose a winner that will be going out to all of our businesses and people who send Christmas cards to along there. A gift to our faculty and staff, it's supposed to be super, super secret, but you guys actually see it sitting in front of you, so you guys have to have. A nice Christmas sweater with big T. And it was a lot of help getting that graphic all pulled together with three bids and found someone to do us a nice quality. Represent the Tipton logo out there for everybody's larger recharge. Okay, every ballgame, jigs on.
Moving on down to four now, it's Miss Nancy's.
Yep, Nancy's up and we're looking at goal two tonight and getting a little update there. We opened a preschool, I'll let them get set up as she brings her guests with her. Give you a little intro, looking at our comprehensive school improvement planning, strategic planning, and what we've been doing so far. And was often in a hurry, a short timeline to meet all those requirements. Chrissy was a lot of help doing that, Nancy has been plugging in, we've got Ms. Knight here tonight just to kind of give you guys some information about action steps that are going on as the year proceeds. Nancy?
All right, so this is our early learning goal. But we're going to support the implementation of preschool curriculum with partnership, in partnership with Little Cardinals on campus. With the idea that ninety percent of the preschool students who attended Little Cardinals Learning Academy, when they come into kindergarten, that they are going to score passing kindergarten readiness test. And ninety percent of those kids are going to be ready for kindergarten when they come in. So, and this one. So, progressing towards our goal, we have Little Cardinals is now officially in the building. And our timeline, like you said, it was really a quick turnaround. The board approved it on June 29th. We spent the summer remodeling, thank you all for, we had many, many, many people who helped with that, so appreciate all those folks. And we were able to start our first day of preschool on September 11th. The immediate impact has been that we have thirteen children of Tipton staff that are attending the preschool or the daycare or preschool with a fifty percent discount. So that, we have a lot of happy teachers in our district with their children. And then we also looked at the kids that are coming up into our classes. Ashley, you want to pay attention to this part. Twenty five, nine students for next year, twenty five the next year are going to be coming. Our kindergarten will be in kindergarten and fifteen the year after that. So, this is helping us being able to work with the kids while they're still young and also to identify the number of kids that were going to, give us a hint of how many kids are going to be coming into the, into our kindergarten class. I, of course, I also wanted to talk about how it impacts our special education program. And you can see, this chart shows last year's numbers and this year's number. We have five fewer kids than we did last year. We ended the, ended last year at seventeen. Six of those kids went to the special learning center. We didn't have the option of Little Cardinals Learning Academy. We had one student on homebound, we had seven students that we served in the preschool for speech, in preschools around town for speech. And we had three students who came in and worked with Ms. Woods in the, in the school building. This year, we have four students at the special learning center. And we have three students that were able to serve at Little Cardinals Learning Academy. So, the big part of that is that if we did not have Little Cardinals Learning Academy, we would have seven kids that would be over at the special learning center. Because those kids need specialized instruction as well as therapy. So, when you think about the continuum replacement for kids with disabilities, we start with the most restrictive and we go to the least restrictive. Adding Little Cardinals Learning Academy allowed us to add in the part-time early childhood, part-time early childhood special ed. And the money is really quite significant difference. The impact at the separate school, the students attend four hours, no, three hours a day, Monday through Thursday. It's two hundred dollars a week per kid and any therapies are seventy dollars an hour. By allowing us to do it at Little Cardinals Learning Academy, we're, we're able to do a hundred and sixty dollars a week, five days a week, all day long, and we still have the therapy costs. So, it has, could impact five full days per week at a lower cost in the preschool setting with the peers that they're going to be going to kindergarten with. So. So I am going to turn it over to Ms. Kim and she is going to finish telling you the rest of the story about our preschool. There you go.
Kim, I'm not sure I'm going to need to warn you before you go to introduce yourself, talk about what you're doing and then talk about this too.
Uh huh, so my name is Kimberly Shite, I know most of you, I graduated from Tipton, Kimberly Higgins. So, back in Tipton, I've taught, previously I was in California teaching pre-K and early childhood. Received my early childhood special education certification last year as well. So, and so my role at Tipton is to assist with early learning and then also I do art as well. And, I mean, in that, I do feel like I work closely with Roxanne too, with several other students on behavior plans and such. So I'm glad I'm able to use several areas of, I don't know that it's expertise, but experience. So, I've learned a lot over, over those eight years. So, anyway, that is, that's kind of me in a nutshell, so I'm happy to be here, everyone's been very welcoming, which I appreciate. Early childhood is one of my passions, so feel free to ask me any questions that you guys have over this. I know Chrissy and Nancy as well can answer a lot of this, but the main thing is, obviously, building the future is, is huge and starts with the little. So, through early childhood, there's so, so many things that impact a child at early, in their early years. So as we go through this, we're going to talk about the benefits. So the biggest benefit, which is part of the, the big chunk of our goal, is increasing kindergarten readiness. One of the great things about our partnership with Little Cardinals Learning Academy is we also partner with our kindergarten teachers, so we're all able to collaboratively discuss what that looks like. What does kindergarten readiness means? It doesn't just mean they're academics, are they socially and emotionally prepared? You know, are there behavior challenges that we can anticipate and be proactive rather than reactive once they get to our kindergarten teachers? So we're going to talk about that. The curriculum that Little Cardinals Learning Academy offers is very engaging, very hands-on. So we're going to go through the areas that it touches on and it's great age-appropriate techniques and activities and that does prepare them for kindergarten as well. And the partnership, basically, is we're able to bridge the early childhood and special education areas with, with the public school setting. So we collaborate, we work really closely, not just with the kiddos that, that are on my caseload or on our caseload, but it's actually going to benefit to several of the students at the academy. All right, so, early learning programs are the foundation of the child's educational career and it has such an impact on them. So this is a great opportunity. One of the things that we're going to talk about, or these four things actually, we'll talk about the, how early learning encourages social, emotional learning. SEL is huge, there's so much research right now on it. We're seeing a lot of, you know, academics can't take place if kiddos are not socially and emotionally regulated. If they're not, they don't know coping techniques and strategies, so that's huge. That should be at the forefront of pretty much any early childhood curriculum. Increasing fine and gross motor development, that prepares us, our kiddos for kindergarten. If they cannot hold pencils, if they cannot, if they don't have good core strength, it's hard for them to sit, it's hard for them to focus. So there's a lot of different things going on if we don't have fine and gross motor development. Encouraging learning through plain exploration, that also touches on cognitive development. Cognitive development, ninety percent of that is done from birth to age five. So, without the learning academy, we wouldn't be hitting those kiddos. So by the time they get to kindergarten, we could lose really great opportunities to be able to build on that cognitive development. Increasing vocabulary and language development is also a part of kindergarten readiness. So the curriculum, sorry if I'm going fast. It is, it touches on four parts, social, emotional learning, physical development, cognitive development and language, like I said. Also, progress is monitored and I know Chrissy gave you guys a handout. So this kind of is a snapshot of all the things that the curriculum goes through. There's also an assessment form in there as well, just as a sample. So she's able to communicate with Kim, which is, you know, that's a big thing moving forward. And I think that's great for our vision, to have that communication, to have that positive relationship with not only our students, but also the parents. And again, it's such a great transition then from Little Cardinals Learning Academy to the school setting where they've already, you know, potentially met me, potentially met kindergarten teachers and were able to talk with Little Cardinals Learning Academy, with myself and with their teacher on, is there a behavior plan? Is there, you know, what are, what do the IEP goals look like if we have a kiddo in special education? So this is just a great curriculum, it touches on all the key, it's an excellent curriculum. It is DESI-approved as well, it's one of the best ones that I've seen, actually. So, kudos to them for selecting that one because it's excellent. The, we put some pictures in here because, I mean, you know, you gotta, you gotta see how much fun the kids are having. So social, emotional, this promotes independence, self-confidence and self-control. So again, SEL is all over the place right now, you see it in, in pretty much everything. The program, if we didn't have, if we don't have that social, emotional regulation, our academics are already starting out behind, which already creates a gap, a learning gap. If kiddos start out in kindergarten with a learning gap, typically that just increases over time throughout their educational career. And we don't want that for our students. So, this is a great opportunity, great curriculum, that we can actually, from the get-go, close that gap straight away. We can put those early interventions in place, get them the therapies they need, get them a behavior plan, whatever it is. You know, working with that specific student. Also, it allows us to really get to know that student and build that relationship and we can see moving forward what the students' educational goals are going to look like, social, emotional goals are going to look like, and really kind of work backwards to make sure each student can be successful. Students who begin kindergarten without a lot of these core components of the social, emotional learning, they do tend to struggle, not just academically, but a lot of times behaviorally. What I've seen, in my experience, is they get frustrated. You know, it's frustrating if you can't learn something, it's frustrating if you can't sit still and focus on what the teacher is saying. So once, once kids feel that frustration, you get that fight or flight, you know, that sets in. And now you're being reactive to a situation instead of proactive. So, our approach is to be proactive and really get to know those students and make sure that we're just teaching social, emotional before anything, any behaviors even happen. You know, we're just teaching kiddos how to share, I mean, basic concepts, you know, how to share, how to use our words. Kiddos get frustrated if they don't have the proper language, the proper words to use. So just being sure that we're practicing and modeling for our students is a huge part of the social, emotional area. And again, this, this is my biggest thing, I mean, I promote this a hundred percent, social, emotional. Kids have to know how to self-regulate and, I mean, that's our job to help teach them how to do that. Without that, academics, nothing else is going to take place. Physical, okay, this, I did not realize until I got into early childhood education how important this is. But, physical development increases children's small and large motor skills and their eye-hand coordination. So, core, core muscles are so important, they can affect not only, like we do a lot of different exercises in a lot of kiddos these days, you know, looking at the phone, looking at an iPad, my kids included, not say anything bad. But, just, we're losing core strength in our kiddos from the get-go. So we do a lot of belly riding to increase our core in our kiddos, to help them learn to write with their elbow down, to grasp a finger correctly, there's all kinds of different strategies that we can do. Also kiddos cross the midline, so they're doing this instead of writing with one hand or the other. So, if we don't have the physical development, then again, kiddos are not going to be at their highest potential. They're not going to be at their best academic, be able to attain their best academic success. Also, poor posture, poor endurance, poor balance are also affected. Again, kiddos are going to fidget a lot more whenever they don't have those things. If they're fidgeting, they're not focusing on their learning. Okay, so if we can really get kiddos in these programs, in this great curriculum, we're going to see a lot, a lot better core development and also fine motor and gross motor skills. And that core strength can actually affect their speech and language as well. So it's very important that we have this as part of our curriculum. The cognitive development promotes critical thinking, it promotes questioning, it promotes also, you know, being a forward thinker and trying to figure out a problem, so problem solving. Healthy brain connections do begin at birth through age five, like I mentioned. So we do a lot of puzzles, the curriculum has all kinds of different memory skills, classifications, sorting, symbolic play. There's dramatic play in there as well. So, as you can see here, there's a lot of different things going on. So sometimes it might look like, oh, they're just playing. Well, if they're building with magnets and it falls over, they're going to get frustrated. Are they going to leave it like that or are they going to think, that didn't work, now what am I going to do? So they're going to try to rebuild that. So by, at that point, we're not only teaching them how to problem solve, but hopefully also how to regulate that social, emotional. We're not going to throw ourselves on the floor because it didn't work, we're going to think, what should I do instead? So, a lot of times when I meet with these students, we might be doing one activity, but we're actually working on three or four different areas whenever we meet. The language part of the curriculum focuses on communication. This is how, how they communicate with their peers. Are they active listening to their teacher and to their peers? And are they participating? What does that look like? What does it look like at storytime? What does it look like whenever we're following directions on a craft or activity? Healthy, not only does healthy brain connections happen during this time, but also their vocabulary starts to develop at this time. The vocabulary they learn by the age five does impact their entire educational career as well. So there's just so much research out there on all four of these areas of the curriculum. Again, another reason I like this curriculum, it hits all four of them and it's very engaging, very hands-on. Every time I go over there, I just want to stay because they're always doing fun things. They have an art segment, they have a movement and music segment, so it's all age-appropriate. Kids learn more after they move, their brain gets stimulated, so the more movement you do and then you sit and do an activity, stretching, then do an activity, all of that's built into the curriculum. So, it's great, it's a learn-through-play-and-exploration. So it's, it's, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to go over there, but it's awesome, I love going over there. They do a great job. And this is a few more pictures of some kiddos as we're working on different small group settings. So, the partnership that we have, I wanted to touch on that, the teachers are wonderful. We have a great collaboration, so I'm able to focus on IEP goals for my specific kids on my caseload. And then I let the teachers know, hey, I noticed this, so here's what we're working on, so we're working together. The other great thing is, not only are the kids on my caseload benefiting, but I feel like they all are. There's been, you know, a few times, one of the, one of the teachers are like, hey, this kiddo's holding their pencil like this, what do I do? Okay, let's try belly riding, let's try having them hold a cotton ball and don't drop the cotton ball. So there's lots of different strategies we talk through and are able to implement. And then, it's great then that I see and then the students coming up, and Mrs. Shite, look, I can do my name now. So, they're getting that, the kids are getting that extra support. They have that other person who cares and really wants to see how they're doing. So, I feel like it's just a great partnership. All of our current kiddos on IEPs have all made, been, being successful at their goals. We just started in September, but they've all already made progress, so I feel like it's going really well. I have great relationships with the parents. So again, that's been great collaborating with the parents as well as the teachers at the academy. Some benefits, we've already talked about a lot of these, progress is being made, the communication. Oh, we also do communicate with our speech pathologists from the special learning center. We collaborate on different things that are working, things we've noticed. So, the, Shelby and I, Shelby is our speech pathologist from special learning center. She and I work with the kiddos one-on-one or in small group, but then the other teachers are with them all day, still working on those similar things along with the curriculum. So they're getting a day filled with all the things specific to their needs. All these strategies that are implemented, it is encouraged for all the students, not just our, our special education caseload. The CDC has reported that about one in five kids have learning or behavior issues, but those early interventions and proactive approaches can prevent that potential learning delay or developmental delay. So, by being with these, you know, students that are three and four years old, we're able to identify certain things. It might not be going to be like an IEP goal, but it might just be something, hey, we really need to work with this child on extra fine motor skills or whatever the need might be. So, I really feel like it's going to help, help in, in all, all areas. So, our vision is obviously to continue working with the academy and all the teachers there. We want to continue to offer the staff benefit to increase our staff retention and recruitment. Honestly, as a, as a mom, I think that's a huge thing, you know, as a teacher, that, that we actually have the learning academy and center right here. We will, we hope to increase enrollment through awareness and advertising and increase resources for applying for the childcare subsidy. And Chrissy can talk about that too, if you guys are interested in that. But she's working on getting that more streamlined to where she can actually help parents apply for that. So, that is going to be a huge impact for us. Parent surveys will be going out in the spring to identify gaps and successes. There'll be continued parent communication newsletters through the academy and center and then continued communication and collaboration between the special education department and the academy. We also offer resources and guidance for parents and we're working on doing this through our early learning screenings, through programs such as First Steps, Parents as Teachers, the health department in our own school district. So just letting parents know in our area, resources that are available. You know, parents are the advocate for their, their kids, and we want to be a team with them and make sure that they are ready for kindergarten. And all of the things that the curriculum touches on, I really feel like you guys will be impressed with the scores come, come Septem- is it September, right? Because there, I mean, the, like I said, hands down, the curriculum's great. It's been a wonderful partnership and so I'm excited to see, see it grow and I hope you guys are too. Do you guys have any questions? Don't talk too fast, sorry.
No, thank you.
You are welcome. Did I miss anything? All right, thank you guys.
Thank you. Is there anything you want to touch on, Chrissy or?
I think the biggest thing is just some of the, some of the growth stuff.
No, you're fine.
Some of the growth stuff is, you know, when we did this so full speed ahead fast, you know, we obviously will take a whole different approach come the fall and then enrollment. You know, a lot more advertising and like touching on that subsidy. Subsidy is where families that otherwise could never afford childcare. That's one thing, it's hard to get people to take advantage of it, especially kiddos that we know out in our community that need our intervention with them. But the subsidy currently is very, very rough. And I've just currently been on a team when we built new software with the state to streamline it to where parents will be able to come into like a kiosk there at the center and we can do like pre-approval right there on spot, things like that. Because that's what's hard to get parents to even go through the process to get the subsidy so we can get them in the preschool. So we're streamlining that, plan on doing lots of advertising and trying to work with the First Steps so that we know what we're facing, so we're ready for it. Especially Kim's services, like, so you guys as a district know, hey, we do a little bit more of the time in there. And then, you know, with us expanding how those numbers at the beginning, Ashley, where they're going to go into kindergarten, like nine this year, twenty-five, that's all going to change and all going to be more because we're not even, I'm only at fifty percent of my capacity now. So we're going to continue to grow at both locations, which is going to up those numbers. And so, I think it's going to be a great thing and I have lots of parents that didn't really get the message, so they didn't get enrolled this first round, that they're already on the waiting list for the fall, for next year. So, I think big things are coming there, so I'm excited, everything's gone really well so far.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you Nancy, thank you Kim.
All right, so I get the fund report. That, that was the fund report, I think. A lot of good news out of our, our pre-K collaboration with Little Cardinals. I think that's just going to grow, I've been down there a few times, been really happy with what we've seen down there. The space looked awesome every day and the kids always seem happy. I call them monkeys at the fence and they all comply with chip noises, so they're, they're learning a lot of social, emotional with Dr. Rob. No, side note. My report is going to focus mainly on some of our financial challenges that we're running into. They want to give you a quick update and just for, you know, the people that watch this on YouTube, I'm sure we have a huge following. Although we get a few people that watch, right?
We do.
That's good, it's, it's because we have a great camera person. If you don't know, Roxanne's behind the camera, everybody out there, so. We have about twenty-two thousand dollars of additional security upgrades that were made available. We already have some vestibules that are built at the high school. We're going to be adding magnetic locks like you already see at the main entrance at the high school and also at the main entrance at the elementary. So we had about three more that we could add that to, the doors were already put in, then the structure was already there. We needed to put the wiring and the mag locks there, so it's now like a, it's like another layer of security there. We also added a few cameras that the administrators in the district, building administrators identified we needed a few cameras and a few. we needed a few cameras in a few areas. We also have Bob here tonight. Where's Bob? Bob's here tonight, and our new maintenance director, Bob Woolery. And I had said, you need to come see what a whole board meeting's like, Bob. So he is glad to be here, I'm sure, and he was busy on some of our plumbing issues right before this meeting. So Bob is working on the get-the-let-out grant. We have another grant for about $17,000 to address some of our pipes now. Luckily, we're not drinking out of any of this water that we're gonna put some filtering on, but there's some recommendations on some of those. They're not like high-toxic and people are gonna die or anything like that. Five parts per billion is the standard, and we had some that were exceeding that. We're not using that for drinking water, it wasn't coming out of the water fountains, we weren't giving it to kids every day. But we have some reporting requirements now, they're already online. We're gonna follow up with some of the recommendations that we had from the company that said, probably should go ahead and filter this water, you know, if you wash dishes in it, or something like that. Now, we did have one ice maker that was a little high, and it's probably because it sat for a while, and it was the teacher's workroom ice maker. So I don't think we were using that ice a lot, otherwise it probably wouldn't have sat for a while. So sometimes when those lines aren't used regularly, they don't flush out. So we'll spend probably about $17,000 there. But those two are both grants, so that's good that the state provided that to us. So budget, financially stressed future, it's a question mark, but I think it's probably easy to say yes, it will be. A lot of people out there don't understand our tax levy. We're all getting those in the mail, and getting ready to pay those, if we haven't paid them already. And there are parts to our levy that are not well-known to everyone. But in general, this is the way this works. Fund One is talking about our operating levy, that can be used for about anything. Fund Two is talking about our teachers and what, where we pay them out. It's an accounting exercise we go through. So money is generally, can't from the general fund transferred over to Fund Two. And then we make our payrolls for our salary benefits for certified staff. We might pay tuition like we do for CTC out of Fund Two. Capital projects, this is the one, Fund Four. Yearly, we might do a transfer over there so that we can put a new roof on, a small roof. It wouldn't be like the whole district-sized roofs unless we were really making a lot of money and saving money there to put on a million-dollar roof sometime in the future, 10 years from now, or something like that. We generally don't have enough money to start saving that up. That's why we do this one, Fund Three, which is bond issues. Now, when the state, sorry, when the local community collects the taxes, the three counties that collect that, this Fund Three amount, which is a dollar eight of our levy, a dollar eight of $4.01, a dollar eight is captured. We never see it on our books, really. It never goes into our bank account. It's a separate, it's almost like electronic deposit that's made into a different account, and that is electronically paid and goes out and pays on our bonds, which is our loans. A lot of people don't understand that because they think, well, we get the whole 401. Well, not really. Those bonds were passed, and the community thankfully agreed to pay those bonds over time. And so that's the debt service levy. So what we're left with is what goes in down in here. Now, we only have money going in here, Fund One. That's the most flexible fund, and that's where most of our money goes. So I'm saying that for viewers, I know the board generally understands that. But the district never touches, basically, excuse me, a little over, Amy told me I was gonna need water up here tonight. We never touch that dollar eight, which is about a fourth of our levy. So about 25% of it is gone once it comes in, never really hits our bank account. So if we're talking about raising the rate, if we added 50 cents to our levy, that would add $95 per year to a $100,000 home, that's for a home now. It would generate close to $300,000 for salary and benefits. That would make our levy 451. But I'm gonna show you another chart here in a minute, or you have the chart in front of you. You can see that really, in that green column, I don't know what else had this, but if you compared our levy right now with area levies, these are 17 districts, which is our new conference, which is New Bloomfield, Fayette, Eugene, Lynn, South Callaway, Harrisburg, and Russellville. And then the old conference, which we're leaving, of the K-Singer, we're basically second to the last on our operating levy. So going back, that's the money we can use here, which we use for just day-to-day, whatever we need to pay for. So we're at 293, that's really what we have available. That dollar eight is always captured, taken away from us, we never see it. It goes and pays our debt. And so the district, for a long time, instead of looking at raising the operating levy and doing something about that, they decided we would rather go in debt and vote on what we want for. That's all the way back to 1998 when they first started talking about bonds. And it goes all the way back to that history, building the new elementary, fixing things, putting new windows in. There's a whole long list of things that were done through bonds. So this levy has really not been addressed for a long time. And statutorily, we can only go up to roughly $4.01, might be within a cent or two each year. We are at our max levy. And for the operating part of our levy, we're second to the last out of those 17 schools. The only ones that are below us have significantly more assessed valuation. And that's Lynn, South Callaway, and the only one close to us, but they have about, oh, let's see, they've got a little bit more assessed valuation, is Windsor. They're at 275, which is the state minimum. That's the state minimum. Now, that's just talking about operating levy, that's money we can use for salaries, money we can use for day-to-day, money for buses, money for food, money for whatever we're paying for, basketballs, fixing the floor, you name it. So when you look at it that way, you're seeing where the problem is. You know, we're well in debt, because then if you look over on the same chart, and look at the debt service levy, and you take a look there, well, we've got a pretty good debt service levy, because we have debt. Now, thankfully, as the debt's paid down, that can go down. And it doesn't affect our operating at all. And so as we go through the years, that will be paid down, and that levy can be voted by the board to go down. We don't have to put as much there. It's just gonna take a little time. And that's years, that's not next year, that's not three years from now, it's gonna take years, plural. But if we look at the total levy, and this is what the public sees, and that's that gold part right there. This is what the public sees. They see 401, okay, it didn't change, it hasn't changed for a few years now, because we've always tried to keep it about the same. So it's at 401. But when you compare it to these same schools that are on your chart, 17 schools listed on this chart, well, we're seven, we're right in the middle of the pack. That's what's not connecting with probably our voters and people understanding, you know, well, our levy's pretty high around here, that's what you hear. And it's because, in the past, Tipton has decided to go into debt, and they've decided to build things that they need, and they've made that decision over time. And so that's accumulated. So we're paying interest, we're building things, and we're taking care of kids, which is a good thing. But the operating side of the levy is where we're falling behind. So why are we in this spot? I think that's a good question, right? Why are we in this spot? For one reason is we had needs. At some point, I think Amy told me a story about kids in the elementary, they were sweating it out, and it was the first time they put HVAC in, is that right, Amy? That was back in 2002, and we've done it again about 20 years later. Why? Because our operating levy is low, and we're in the same spot, so we don't have the money. We have to go get a loan, just like somebody getting a loan to put a new deck on their house, or add a different room, they don't have the money, so they get a loan against their house. You know, they paid their mortgage down a little bit, they go get another loan, they put the new room on for the new baby, or whatever, the new delivery room, or the man cave, or whatever they're doing to their home. So that's what we've done, tipped it. We've kept our levy low, so we've gone for the loans. It would be nice at some point to pay those all off, and then we just, you know, adjust our levy down, make sure operating levy is where it needs to be, bank the money, do things in stages, push it over to Fund Four, everybody following, save up the money. So when you want to build that new room, you've already got it saved up, you just spend it because the community's already given that to you in your operating levy. That just happened in the case here. So there's nothing wrong with what the district's has done. So here's the other reasons. When we look at what the state gives us, we've got, transportation has been funded fairly low over the years. In fact, even when I first came here, it was around 20% of what they were supposed to give us. Instead of giving 75% of the cost of our transportation, they were giving us 20%. And that went on for a long time. In fact, it was one of the first things the state cut for many, many, many years. And some of you know that, because you've gone to some of the area meetings, I think Stephanie's kind of aware of it, because you've probably heard it before. So it's still kind of surprising that I had never remembered, in the time that I've been administrator or a teacher, that we were ever, what would they call, fully funded, which is 75% by statute, which they're supposed to give us, but never really have. So I said, well, we just don't have the money, and the state doesn't give it to us. We just have to live with it and make it up locally. Also, the state adequacy target, which is where we get our state money per kid, the guaranteed amount we get per kid, has never been given an adjustment for inflation. In fact, it's been about 1% for about 15 years, and I'll show you a chart here in a minute. And then I already talked about the fact that our local operating levy has been low, it's just been low. So this is in the past 15 years, this is state adequacy target, which comes from the state. They say we want you to hit this target every year. So back in 2009, it was 6117. This is how much change you saw over the years, and you actually saw it go up and down a little bit from year to year. So it's at 6375 now, on what we're supposed to receive per child. And back then, it was 6117. It's only gone up 4.2% if you do the math, over 15 years. I think in a given year, you can pretty much bank on inflation being somewhere around 2%. And this is what's interesting. So remember that number, 6375, which you can see the formula's been stuck for five years now. It hasn't changed a bit. Anybody notice any inflation in the last five years? Anything changed? Nothing's changed. And this is why the state is really, this question, what are we doing at the state level for education? And they have not fixed the foundation formula. So we're stuck, that's where it is. The thing that's helped us to be able to address some of these salaries and set a goal to have competitive salaries is the fact the federal government did come through. With all that ESER money that came through, we were able to meet the shortfall when inflation hit our bond issue. In other words, we didn't have enough money to finish some of these projects, we had the money. When we wanted to raise salaries, we did, we had the money. Now, this next year, we'll be short about 400 grand, because we're not getting any more federal money from ESER, the COVID money that came out to address educational shortfalls. So remember this number right here, it's been stuck since back in 2020. 4.2% in 15 years. Let's say if they had just raised it 1% per year since 2009, the SAT would have been 7102. So basically, $727 more, okay, this year, for this fiscal year, per kid. So we're basically talking about $420,000 more we would have had. If they had just, if the state had just made that commitment to give us 1% more. And 1% doesn't sound like it's crazy money, does it? But it hasn't been done, because you go back here, and this is what they were doing. They're all over the map. They appropriate, then they don't really collect. Or the economy went down, oop, we just didn't have it this year. You know, it's just not getting done, the job's not getting done. So this makes budgeting very difficult. If we knew that we could expect that every year, and this is what legislators are talking about, they're saying, well, maybe we need some kind of a cost of living or an inflationary trigger to kick in every year, and we make that commitment, and we actually follow through on it. Yeah, that'd be great. Be great for all the superintendents, and we'd get a lot more sleep. So this is what's coming out of DESI, the State Board of Education, right now. So they're looking, their recommendation is to increase the foundation formula by basically $120 million, okay? So we're at 6375 at the end of this year, unchanged since 2020. And then phase it in, even though we should be up here, based on the numbers they're seeing, this is where we should be, okay? And then go to here, then to here. Now, remember, this is a recommendation. It's gotta go through the legislator, it's gotta get signed off on, it's gotta go through all the committees, there has to be a bill. What are they gonna do? Well, we can go back and see what they've been doing. This is what they've been doing. This is what they've been doing. But now that the cliff is here, are they really gonna step up and follow these recommendations? And there's a lot of pessimism out there, I'm one of them. I think it's about 50/50. Nobody really knows. And even then, we're not talking about really making up a huge gap here. And we won't know this till probably we get to June. We will not know. That's what makes budgeting hard. Because you're gonna be monitoring and trying to see what bills are gonna make it through, what's gonna get signed off on. We're gonna be getting updates from January all the way to June, see what finally gets signed by the governor at the end of June. And in the meantime, we will be hiring people. We'll be looking at, how many people do we need to meet the needs of our kids? You know, do we hire back a third kindergarten teacher, do we not? Do we keep this program, do we not? We're trying to make decisions, while they have not made their decision on what they're gonna do. Okay, so here's some facts to consider. Our enrollment's been pretty steady, but I'm seeing a little bit of a decline. It helps to have the pre-K around, because you can kind of figure out a better number of how many kindergartners are coming in. If I was gonna guess, I'd say we'd be within 20 of 600 every year, because that's what I've seen. I feel like we're getting a little bit of decline, but I also think adding our pre-K is gonna help us. So right now, I'm gonna say declining slightly, possibly, based on what I've seen. But that doesn't mean we don't have 10 more kids moving to the high school, you know, like one year we had, didn't we? This better, we had 74 kids move in, and all of a sudden, we didn't know where they came from. And we're like, oh, we're gonna have like 50s, now we're in the 70s. So 10 traditionally, it seems like we're staying right around 600. State of Missouri, I just said this, they've made no commitment to fund at a higher state adequacy target per child. They have not kept pace with inflation, we talked about that already. If they appropriate the funds based on higher SAT, it's subject to tax revenue, what's actually coming in, and the overall Missouri economy. Anybody remember anything about a Senate bill that passed last year? Now, we have people eligible for Social Security in several counties now. They're talking about, well, let's just freeze or take our property taxes all the way back to like 1992, or when I turned 62, not 92, but when I turned 62, I'm 80 now, I want that old rate. And they're sorting that out in some counties now. What's the impact of that? I can guarantee you it's negative for us, absolutely negative for us. Excuse you guys. So for many years, we've been underfunded at SAT. Transportation's now 75% funded, but it's usually one of the first things cut, we've talked about that. Higher needs for students are presenting in our systems, there's about a 20% rise in students with special needs in our district. We've gone from the 80s to low 100s now, Nancy. So we're seeing more and more special needs that are coming in. That cost, some of that cost is covered, but there's some cost to us as well. And, you know, our current operating levy is really not sufficient, and we're at 293, to keep pace with the prevailing wages for teachers and schools our size. If you look at some of those schools on this list, I wanted to add on what those school sizes were as well. South Callaway is pretty close to our size, but they got the big reactor right there. So they're drawing the assessed valuation off of that, that helps them. They're able to raise their salaries significantly, and they have much nicer facilities if you look at it. But we're not going to make it long-term, keeping up with, you can say keeping up with the Joneses, some people think that's a negative thing, but it's actually keeping up with keeping highly qualified people here. You know, we're gonna keep shrinking back behind, and we'll be one of the lowest-paid districts in the area for our size. That's what's gonna happen. This school year, we set a goal, we knew we were deficit spending, we're deficit spending about a quarter million dollars. That's due to salaries. That's due to salaries. We'll lose about four hundred thousand dollars next year in our budget from federal money. I think we can expect a rise in healthcare plans for our personnel, we'll know in late January, early February. I don't think it'll be above ten percent, but that's kinda the word on the street. It'll be less than ten percent, but we'll see a rise. And we've kinda made that commitment in the past to say, "Hey, let's make sure we're fully funding at least one plan for our faculty and staff, and we'll have to look at that when that comes out, and we'll get that in late January." And I think we can expect a rise in transportation costs in twenty-four, twenty-five. Just before I got COVID, I was just about ready to put that out for bid, guys. I had planned to have it out for bid last week, but I'm gonna get back and work on that probably before break goes out. I can expect we'll have a rise in transportation costs. I just, I see our bus services, you know, seeing what's happening with us, when now we're getting our full seventy-five percent, they're thinking there's money there. I'm thinking they're thinking. So I'm mind-reading, I guess. They're thinking, "Hey, you've got more to put down on transportation now. You used to get twenty percent, now you got seventy-five percent of your reliable costs, so we should get more." Nobody's doing, "Oh, no more money for me," everybody's doing this. My thought is, is that we should continue to budget and operate our salary schedule for all personnel. We've changed it significantly, we've raised it significantly, we should stick to it. It is a huge culture killer. If we don't follow through with that commitment and value our high-quality personnel, I think creates a lot of resentment and a feeling of being undervalued. So freezing it, I don't even think it's a good option. I think that, and we talked about this before, but the legislature's gonna be looking at that minimum teacher salary. With Arkansas moving to fifty thousand dollars as a minimum teacher salary and it being our southern neighbor, and we'll be one of the lowest in the middle of the United States in our area, so we're comparing schools in our area, the states are comparing other states in their area, I think it's gonna be above thirty-eight K. Quite honestly, that's my opinion. I think they're gonna do more. The last legislative update I attended basically said, "It'll be a phase-in, whatever that new minimum is." And we'll be expected to meet it, so we'll get a grant of some sort helping us phase it in. But eventually, what's gonna happen is gonna be required, and it's gonna be all on us. So it's gonna boom, hit us. But maybe they'll give us a little heads up. I did a, I did an interview today with Channel Seventeen about that subject right there. I had a reporter call me and we did a little Zoom thing, so I don't know if I should put it on or not, but, you know, what is the cost of a high-quality educator now? I think everybody's asking that question, and they should remember what it was like during the pandemic when everything was shut down. Everybody needed those high-quality educators, absolutely. And we've got a lot of competition that is going on between area schools here, across the state. Everybody's looking for those highly qualified, certified teachers. And at one point, you know, it seemed like you could get a ton of applications. Now, they're hard to find, am I right? Hard to find. Our own assessed valuation of our school district, it's not increasing enough to keep pace with inflation. And, you know, I don't know if it's the fault of the assessor, or we just really have some undervalued property, or what's going on, but it went up point nine percent last year with the reassessment here. Point nine. Doesn't seem right to me either, Bill. So here's the time for action, where we've gotta think about what we wanna do about it. We're kinda getting painted into a corner here because of the lack of, or the inaction at the legislative level. We had all this crazy inflation. We took care of all the infrastructure needs. We've got a little bit of remaining debt. We could, because we've saved enough money over in Fund Four, that's capital projects, we could use what we have there, possibly do a little bit of transfer at the end of the year, and we could pay off what we have left on our equipment lease, which is what we put on the roof. It was about six hundred thousand. It's about three hundred thousand dollars now. And we wouldn't have much sitting over there in Fund Four anymore. But we've met a lot of our needs already. You can also refinance it, but you can put another bond issue and say, "Hey, we just need to issue bonds for this and get a different loan and let that debt service pay it, that dollar eight pay it, which we never get to touch." And doing that would put another hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year into our budget. So you can do that two ways. We can take care of that last piece of debt. We've already paid off some for office, we paid off the playground. So there's two options there. But if we would use what we have on hand, we need to understand that that may lower our ending fund downs for this year. I don't know about how much, because it depends on what pops up. We're fixing the faucets down there in the bathroom right now for a few grand, right, Bob? We're fixing faucets, yeah. So, I mean, we really don't have anything major pop up, it'll be okay. I don't know about how much that would be. We can expect a few percentage points lower on our fund balance if we go ahead and do that. That's not the worst option. I don't think we can get a bond issue passed to take care of that debt that we have left over from the craze in inflation we encountered. We can pass a levy increase, which I think we probably should do, looking at where we rank with the area schools in this area. Purpose would be simply to keep competitive salaries. And to take a look and communicate to the public that, you know, we're ranking second to the last on what we can use to pay people, this is the problem. You know, we're not being helped a lot by the state yet, and we're not gonna be able to hold on very long before we're gonna have to make pretty significant cuts. And we can always wait and see what the legislature will do with our SAT, but we can expect a pretty good chomp out of our fund balances going into twenty-four, twenty-five at the end of that school year. We can also make some cuts for twenty-four, twenty-five, and I think we're gonna have to do that. And start looking at attrition with personnel, start looking pretty critically at some of our programs and how many kids are really involved in our activities. Last year, just to remind you, we cut an elementary teacher, we cut a high school teacher, and we cut the entire FACS program. And those are the kinda cuts I'm talking about, people and programs. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm coughing so much. I have to have, if we put a levy on the ballot, I have to have it in by January twenty-third. So if the board approves that some kind of a levy increase, telling me to move forward tonight on that, that's on the, the action items on the agenda tonight, we would come back on the tenth, which is our regular meeting. I showed the ballot language to you, you'd see it in the board notes before we ever got here. It would just be in the consent agenda. But we have to get the lawyers involved and make sure that we've done everything and dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's and have our paperwork together. Turn it into the three counties for a vote. That is a simple majority vote, so it won't be the fifty-seven point one four that we need. But in the time that we have, we'll have to communicate this very clearly, that we are second to the last, we do not have a lot of money to operate on. Our only goal is to keep our salaries competitive with area schools. What are your questions?
So what other information could you use at the public? Any thanks for the next one. If I had anything, thoughts, concerns, questions?
I want concerns about it being on the ballot and not passing and then what, who, the types of guys?
That's all I can tell you. You gotta go back to that slide that said personnel, programs, and activities.
And how it gets communicated, how would it get communicated? How do you get people to listen, to understand? And how do you get people to say, "Yes, I wanna pay more taxes?" because people don't think that. So I just have to learn the uneasy feeling about it, they don't, and then that's what it come back to again.
That's a good point. But I mean, the community members, I would like to think they want the very best teachers that we can put in that school. It's that same old adage, you know? They want, I mean, they want, want, want. But when the district needs help, they don't wanna help. And it's unfortunate, but, you know, I think, I don't know.
Well, we shouldn't say all the community.
Well, not all, majority, I mean, when you can't pass it. Anyway, I mean.
A no-tax increase won't pass.
If you can't pass a no-tax increase, and... So, I mean, I guess that's what we're facing with it.
And probably what we'll be doing and working on in February, March, is they cut us. And we'll be looking at, and I'll have Jason tell me how many kids are participating in what programs, and I'll tell you what things cost. And we're gonna have a list of things that will be cut if it does not pass. And we're probably gonna have to make some cuts anyway, so. And we're already looking at a seven or eight period day and see if that can facilitate some cuts. But that means we're not offering some things that we normally offer. I listened to DESI on a live webinar on Tuesday. And all the requirements are being put in on this with the Missouri School Improvement Program, Route Six. And they're measuring this up against Rockwood or Francis Howe or anybody else, same requirements. You know, access to dual credit, access to things to prepare kids, all this stuff. And that's great, but their answer for it says, "Well, you just need to promote access, and the way to do that, is just put it online. And just let them do it online." I don't see anybody smiling and giving a thumbs up on that. But we like to have a teacher. You know, the relationship between a teacher and a student, that's what facilitates learning, and that's what it takes. I'm sorry, I don't think a computer teaches much of anybody very well, so, but having that teacher there does. Having good teachers there does. And so, you know, Tipton's gonna have to decide what kind of school it wanna look like because that will be one of the options we have, if we can't hire as many teachers as more of it goes online, that's for sure gonna happen. You know, and I don't think that's what's best for kids. That's one thing, that's one result of that. And bringing teachers here, I know we're going to hiring season, starting about March, and teachers start making the decision what they wanna do with their careers and where they wanna continue. And while I don't expect a lot of teachers to leave this year, at some will. And we'll have to fill some gaps, and your principals over here are going to have to start, you know, trying to market our school. And the people out there looking for jobs are going to compare us to Otterville and Stover and Savelia, and they're gonna look at everyone, they wanna be in this area, and they're gonna take our pay scale out and they're gonna put it right next to somebody else's. And a few thousand bucks is gonna make a difference. Fifty hundred dollars will make a difference, five hundred dollars will make a difference. We have to be competitive, we're not gonna hit these people. Plain and simple. We're not gonna get them. And that's not the fault of your building administrators, that's not the fault of the culture, that's not the fault of people don't wanna live in Tipton, that's... We can't offer a competitive salary, because our budget won't allow for it. And I'll tell you, if we continue to diminish what we offer and what we can do for kids, because we have to do more of these significant ones, and losing the whole FACS program is kind of a big deal. That's a whole program gone. That's FBLA, everything. And I know we picked up a pre-K and tried to make a win out of it, and that's great, because we have it. And I'm glad we did. Make, you know, eliminate out lemons, but I don't think we're gonna be able to do that at the time. So while I'm glad for that result, because it wasn't as bad as it could have been, we are gonna start losing some things that show up, people are gonna notice. And what does that do to enrollment? What does that do to people wanting to stay here? Does that make them start looking at for sales? Of course it does. Does that make them start looking at Savelia? Does it make them say, "Well, they don't have this, they don't have that, it's just a little school, it doesn't have much"? It's competitive, guys. People are gonna think about where they're gonna put their kids. And I hope the people who listen to this online will say, "We need to be that community where people bring their kids to raise them, and they have a great school to send them to and a whole lot of options." That's what we should strive to be, is that veteran community where people build their home, raise their three or four kids, and have a place that they're proud of. You know, there's just not, everybody's not wanting to live in Clopey or Savelia or larger school districts. It's a great district, but I'm hoping the state comes through, gotta be a partial fix. I'm hoping our local voters will come through, there'll be a partial fix, and we do make some cuts that aren't too deep, that make us less competitive. Maybe make us a little more efficient. It bothers me a little bit, because we have to bid for food services this year and also have to bid for transportation, and I'm wondering how those things are gonna come out. And of course, every year, we're looking at our healthcare and what that looks like. None of those things have gone down, they're all going down. The costs of school are all going up, no matter what it is. I haven't seen anything go down since I've been superintendent or principal. It's all gone up. Any other questions? I don't know if preaching required, probably.
I don't think so. Administrator reports. Go on, you're deal. You guys have any questions, turn them by. I'll be. Are you all good? You good?
Oh.
Ready for Christmas break? Okay, so everybody's read those. Old business, we have nothing. Now we're gonna move to new business. As everybody can see there, hey. Do you wanna place a ballot measure on the ballot? You gotta know why, what was that?
Near the end of the game.
January twenty-third?
Yep. I think it was what amount, and then we'll come up with the language for it if you guys approve that. Fifty cents, we basically will generate approximately three hundred thousand dollars. Here's a good thing that I didn't mention. Let's say we put a dollar on there and say our cap is a dollar more, then what do we do? We don't have to do the full dollar every year. You have a tax levy hearing? I'll put the budget together and we say, "We need sixty-five cents this year, we need fifty-five cents this year." Assessed valuation's looking bad, but we'll have a little bit of room to basically move that up and down as we need to. Right now, it looks like we need the dog, basically, what's going on. But we're right at the top of it right now, and I think that will, that'll make our tax levy hearings a lot more interesting, because we need to really kinda hone in on what we really need. But if we put it too low and we have to go back again, that's a problem too, right? Keep going back, keep going back. Also, as the assessed valuation goes up, if it actually gets righted, I'm sure, it might go down to where we can only go up to ninety cents, because it's a calculation, it's just like your taxes on what you can do. So it might come down a little bit on what we can even do. So there's a little bit of variable in there. As assessed valuation goes up, we don't have to tax as much, we don't have so many kids, and our cost is only so much, and we can only grow so much, because it's tied to the consumer price index, so.
So do you need to know if a yes or no on that?
I need, I need you guys to vote on what you'd like to do. If you don't wanna put it on the ballot, you need to tell me.
Or I'll flip it and then vote. And a dollar now. I think you mean, you don't wanna put your, uh?
Well, I think, I think we put it on, I think we do it, and here's why. And I think we asked for a dollar, and here's why. Because if it does not pass... Our, our hands are forced, because it didn't pass. So, that champagne taste on a beer budget type, I mean, we just, and I hope like hell it passes. Because I don't think anybody at this table wants to see, and I know they don't either, they don't wanna see a teacher gone out of each building. Nobody in this room wants to see two boys sport, sports, and two girls sports done. Because once they're gone, they're gone. You're, you're not gonna get it back. Because you're making these cuts, because you're running swim, it's not kinda bad. So I think, that's, that's my opinion.
So if a fifty cent passed, but then the state does come through with the money that we don't know about right now, then if the tax hearing, then we can decide if we didn't really need the fifty cents.
Right, we follow a paperwork invisible about divided, and I work together, and we say, here's how much we really need for next year's budget, we only need thirty-five of that. So it gives us, gives us a range of being able to say, we only need, we're voting it up fifty, but we only need this much, so, so. Which is good, right?
Yeah. Because hopefully the state, I mean, you never know.
Yeah.
But it's not, that's our, I feel about, I mean, okay. I mean, I mean, who knows, you know what I'm saying, who knows? But I would like to think it would pass, because I would like to think the community wouldn't wanna see that either. But I mean, it's been a hell of a struggle. So, I mean, I said we do it, we put it in the community's hands, be like, hey, we're asking for this to keep our wages where they need to be. So we can have good, good quali- qualified teachers, and see what happens.
And the programs for our kids.
And the programs, I mean, that, it's, you know, it's DECA, and it's everything, it's not just sporting stuff, it's everything. You have a question, Ken?
Am I allowed to speak?
I mean, if you have a question, or?
Well, I just, I have a question, I didn't know, if you guys do that, would you have a committee to try to promote it?
But every communication moves out.
But can the school communicate that, or is that like? Like, would the teachers be part of that?
We can't promote it. When we run.
We can get them to pass, we, we work through the committee. I think that's been helpful.
Yeah, I could, I, I just think teachers would be supportive of it and want tech help if we could, sorry, I don't know if I'm.
No, it's all right. It's okay?
So it's okay.
I mean, it's nice to hear, it's nice to hear from teachers and someone else besides us, you know? So what's, what's everybody's think? You guys know my opinion, what's yours' opinion?
I think it's been a little bit, we're, we're in a deep deal operating, that's been true for a while. And I think we can, can down the road for a few years. I mean, I don't look that's, I mean, we kind of look at this as something that's impending. I worry that a dollar is too much, personally. But I understand the reasoning why we would wanna do that. I think it would, you moving, moving to a dollar with the argument that we would have, um, some flexibility, um, to make a choice based on the needs. I guess, I, I think in this room, I think it, well, hopeful, you, hopefully you guys, but here, um, if you, especially the stuff we do in close session, we do talk about, and everything we do, we try to do as rational as we can based on the information that we have, is while doing the best we can for the kids and the community, but some people don't believe that. You know, some people don't have that type of trust, so there's a little bit of a trust gap there, I think, when going towards... That we may be elusional, but that is a concern, is that you go too high in not getting it. I do, I am supportive of the, of the, of the board, the, I think this is something we would wanna all be on board with, you know, and I guess.
So is that what you're gonna work out, kind of use?
I need you guys to vote on how much you want to do, you know, put that in, or you, in the language, you'll see the language. If you vote on it and say, this is how much we want, you know, about how much we're talking about, it's about two hundred thousand, it could be fifty cents, it's another six hundred thousand, it could be a dollar. And that gives us, you know, from transportation, food service, to raises, to keeping up with Joneses, to the money we're losing in our budget, keeping our programs up, all that stuff. I think it mitigates it for a dollar, it just kinda gets us, well, probably still debt suspending it for fifty cents, but I'm not counting on the state at this point, based on our revenue. And I'm not, and I am counting on the state, they're gonna set it to the minimum, and then we're gonna have something else we gotta climb the hill for. It's like, we're, we're caught, you know? And I'd really like to see the foundation come through, but I, I've seen those things be put together before, and it took them years to put these things together, and I don't see anybody doing the work, or anybody talking about the work it takes to put a, a formula together, and they, they went through so many different compromises, and different rules, and... And one of the things they did was this homehold harmless, you know, and nobody could get harmed to get the same amount we got in this year, like in two thousand nine, or something like that. You know, some districts benefit from what I call ghost kids, you know, holding home numbers, it'll be high, and we pay more than they need, we kinda know who these districts are, but we're only in our area. So, there's a lot of variables out there, guys, so, um, you know, we'll, we'll give the information so people understand why. You can't say, hey, vote for this, we can't say, this is why, this is what we're trying to do as a, as a board, and administrations, and, um, and the chips will fall where they may. And, you know, your work is gonna look like in a few years, these are all our programs, this is what I want you to look at, tell me what's on the cut list. And we start telling people, you see, if there's some things we're planning to definitely cut, if this can't pass. And then we will have to do it. So we may not be offering contracts for some co-curriculars, or some, uh, sports, or we may not be hiring quite as many teachers in some areas, we're gonna be in that spot. We're there.
I think, um, I think that a message that, and I don't think we get it this way, but I think probably this is solved to a goal. I mean, I think that there's probably a need to increase operating levy, but there are also, it's, it's important to try to make sure we're evaluating everything we have, to be smart about what we do. So I, I don't, I think we can't send a message that, okay, you do this and nothing's getting cut. Because some people are gonna point to that and say, okay, well, look what you promised me, and I still did it anyway.
That's what we've had a problem with.
Well, I mean, I think that everyone, I mean, we have, I, we need to do the best we can with the things that are really important to us, that are core values, and that's, it's educational part first, right? So, there's a lot of things that go into that, that feed up and through there, so, um, it's tough.
Sorry to deliver such a great Christmas message, giving.
No, I just, I mean, it's just unfortunate, legislatures should understand, um, that, you know, the timing of the decisions that they made, how they impact, um, the timing of decisions we have to make. And everything is so far off right now, they don't understand that, so, if, we don't know the, um, rules to the game, we're starting to play it, and we don't even know what we're playing with. So that's the problem. That would be, it would be great if that could be solved somehow.
And, and we have a lot of lobbyists and advocates that are up there, and I think term limits has kinda hurt our legislators, and, you know, the guy, the whole idea of school choice, there's a lot of attacks on public school for a lot of not good reasons, and some good reasons for some districts that are not doing some things that help school districts. And I don't mention those things here, you can just watch the news and you know. But I, I think in Missouri, public schools have done a great job. One in five kids gets educated in a rural school district, one apply. And on the list of the top ten schools that need to have rural education addressed, there's been a big study that we just put out, it's all over a hundred pages long, I'll send it to you, it's interesting. They talk about Missouri is like in the top ten for needing our, our policy addressed, funding addressed, especially for students in rural education. And rural educators, you know, small districts make a huge impact on students in poverty. You know, they're, they're the, they're the laid up out of, you know, just living the life, sitting at home, waiting for government some check. But Missouri has just lacked the economy.
That's what you're all thinking. Fifty cents, a dollar, quarter, what? If you ask for fifty cents, if it passes, it's great, but you're gonna have to go back and get another fifty pretty quick, pretty soon. But then again, if you ask for a dollar, maybe it'll pass, and there you are.
But if it does pass, I mean, there'll be the full dollar, they don't have to have a full dollar.
Right. But I mean, again, that's, it's gonna be hard to communicate that.
Yeah, it's tough, I mean, um, at some point in time, there needs to be a shift where we're reducing, um, the debt levy and moving that over into the operating levy. Well, we can't. Well, somebody can, because what do we have here, like, Stover's got zero underneath their debt levy and their debt.
They don't debt.
So how do they handle capital projects? Through their operating work?
Yep, through their operating levy.
Through their operating levy.
That's my point.
They're drawn from a, a larger assessed valuation, with their assessed valuation only like a hundred grand.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
They're dumb.
Yeah, that's exactly what my point is. Um, at some point in time, it'd be nice to move away from going in debt, going in debt to where you could fund capital projects.
Well, this would do it, this could do it.
It could.
If we continue to pare that off, then if we had a dollar to deal with, maybe we've got a little more there, maybe do some cuts, and we can start banking it over to capital.
The, the reality is, people don't care how, that, that there's two different.
No, they don't understand.
Numbers, they don't care that it's, you know, two ninety-three over here and one oh eight, they're looking at four oh one.
Sure.
So, it would be nice if four oh one was over in one category and it's zero on the, uh, debt service side, because the prob- the problem you've got is that, okay, we're gonna say we don't have any major things coming up. Well, we have a schedule of things that are gonna have to be paid, and if, if you don't set aside money for capital projects annually, then those are gonna be a big problem for us. And we, like, you talked about a roof, I don't, I know we're ways away from that, but they're so expensive that, you know.
We, we were looking for a dollar? How do you wanna work it?
Place it on the ballot or sit on the ballot?
Cast roads for an additional, um, whether one dollar on or off.
Sorry.
So we got a motion by Deeds, signed by Stephanie. They're asking for a dollar. Is that right?
That's right.
Hold it. Own favor. One, two, three, four, five, six, oh. I'll start having our municipal bite draw up, and, and do you by chance, some know how many years that, that was over there? I'll go back and look.
Did you say nineteen ninety-eight, or was that, he's, he's saying?
That's a bond, that, that was a bond.
Oh.
That's gonna, this is gonna require, like him, to really set, set an effort.
So, the next item on the business here is approval, approval or disapproval to transfer funds from Fund One to pay off existing lease, lease purchase of H-Rank. If you do that, you're gonna run Fund Four.
Well, I can, I can leave a little bit in Fund Four, I'm saying somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars, it would probably be good, going into next year. I've paid off this year, I'll, this transfer will be needed to pay it off, and you can see in the notes that I've given there, um, we'll use what we have on hand, which is currently sitting on a pool of the four hundred thousand dollars. I need to pay three hundred, but I know we still have the bus ride to pay for, the ton of money to pay for, which we approved last summer to finish out, and anything else that comes up, there's seventy thousand.
Right.
Roughly, yeah, easy. So, um, there might be three hundred grand there sitting there, so I might have just enough and just transfer some over at the end of the year. So, I just want you to understand, I'm telling you this, that capital projects Fund Four will, will be running on the edge. They really won't be able to do much. If we do anything, it'll be transferring out of operating over there as needed, let's say, you know, some, we'll have insurance to cover, you know, unexpected stuff, but stuff that's gonna be on us, you know, we're gonna have to deal with it. We're gonna have to be able to take on any projects at all, I kinda know that already. I just want you to understand that capital projects is taking banks dry, for the most part. I'll wait till we get to the end of the year. So just what I think our, I think our fund guidance would be of in this year, maybe as close to that thirty percent, like, that's something thirty-four, if we make the going, and we can, yeah, I think we'll be close to the thirty, might be high points.
What, wouldn't they say we give the first, just give her out, or we like, just to give her four?
We, we can go all the way down, and I put that, that click on there for you, and we'll be financially stressed accordingly, Desi, we go to the three percent. I do not recommend we go to three percent, the board goes to twenty-five percent, for this with our size, that's pretty reasonable, so we'll get closer to that, keeping that preserved. Um, your, your auditor will tell you to keep like six months, so.
How much money are you saving in interest?
That was my question.
Um, I have to go back and look, I'll put that table, it'll be a lot, save a little bit. I'm gonna go back, because it's a lot of personal, you know, it's like.
One point four, so it's really low.
I gotta go down there, and it was historically a little bit, it was right, so. There'll be a lot of money saved, but it'll be off the books, and we'll have it, we'll have it in our operating expenses, in, in twenty-four point five. If that's a comfortable, comfortable position for the board to be in, so I have enough sitting in capital projects, then this that will be backed up over time. If that's a comfortable, comfortable position with the board being, it's not having, like, sitting in capital projects, then this staff will be backed up over time. You have a little bit that your choir that comes in, the hookups and fines and things like that, that's a certain percentage of them, it's a lot.
And it's, it's kind of a little too tight.
Where we are, it becomes kind of tight. Rather be tight there than in operating. 'Cause I know I can always push money over there, but...
This can be done anytime.
I was gonna say, why are you even gonna do this right now?
I just want, I wanna know what you guys want to do, but... Because if I do that, then I know that helps us going into twenty-four, twenty-five, but I might keep making lease payments, a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year, the next three years, so I know I already have a hundred twenty thousand dollars freed up to deal with the operating, and that gets me closer to the short call.
Can we, can we wait until we get a better idea what the state's gonna do?
Sure. Absolutely.
And then maybe...
You wanna continue to make the lease payments, that's fine. I'm giving you the option, I'm looking at every angle, what I can do.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to doing it, if it makes sense, but, um, it may be a timing issue, and swing, till you know a little bit more.
I'm gonna have to look.
To get it.
I don't want to get it. Yeah, I'm planning for it, for major, you know, looking at it already, but I don't have to do right, though, I don't have to do it right now. I'll put it on their, on their radar.
Yeah. I think we need to keep it on, I mean, like, I, I don't think we talked about it today, and then it'd never be an option again, um, to think about.
Okay.
You know, I think, I have a feeling that we'll be talking about finances quite a bit, um, for a while, so I'm sure this will...
You making a motion to table after that, huh?
Uh, do we vote on that? 'Cause I will.
Vote today.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to...
Motion by both, second by Diggs, all clear. Six oh. You're up, both, isn't it?
All right, uh, I'll make a motion to move semi-expected session for some of the six ones, we only want to go to one to discuss, um, the three and thirteen.
Excellent.
To include, um, Russ Thomas.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, Super Diddy. Yeah, so we got a bit, that's it.